Group tonight. I call the order. It is unfortunate that we have to go back to masks and deal with fogging glasses again. Call the order, the September 13th, 2021 meeting of the Town Council for the town of Washington, Virginia. We have an agenda for today. I'd like to have a, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have an addition, which is to add a discussion and an action on electronic meetings. Do it as D under new business. Since I made the motion, I obviously approve the amendment. Do you as a second?
I second with the amendment.
Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, a roll call vote to approve the agenda with the addition. Jean?
Yes.
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 All right. The agenda is approved. We have minutes from the August 9th and the August 21st meetings of Town Council. I would like to go ahead and have a motion to approve both of them.
I make a motion to approve both of them.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you. Any questions or changes?
Look good to me.
Okay. If that, not hearing of anything, then a roll call vote to approve. Jean?
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
I will also.
You will also abstain?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. Minutes are approved. Mayor's report. I have a number of things to bring to everyone's attention. Perhaps the first thing that I should bring up is that we will be having a routine maintenance of the water lines tomorrow from 12 o'clock to probably around 5 o'clock in the afternoon. During this time, you may experience water discoloration and a loss of water pressure. So we ask that you please keep water used to a minimum until the line flushing is complete. If you experience water discoloration after the maintenance is complete, you should run your faucet until the water runs clear. You may also want to preserve some water in a container or something during that time. And that's what it says in the next paragraph. Okay. So that will be tomorrow from 12 roughly to 5. Second is the Rappahannock, always get this wrong, Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission is a group that helps with planning. They have done a lot of support to the various communities in Rappahannock, Orange, Madison, and Falkir County and all the municipalities therein, in Rappahannock. And they're having their annual meeting and awards presentation, which will be at the Lake of the Woods Clubhouse in Orange County on Thursday, October 7th. I will send an email, but all members of the Town Council and the Planning Commission and the ARB and the BZA are welcome to attend. And the first person who gets to me, my wife has chosen not to go. So the first person who gets to me can be my free date at this event. So a couple of more things. Some of you may have seen the 2020 census, the numbers that we have. Come on in, please. There are seats right along the edge over there. The numbers, there seems to be at the last Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission meeting, there seemed to be a lot of question about the numbers that came out in the census, both in how the numbers were counted and compiled. So you need to take the numbers that are seen for both the county and for the town of Washington with a very large grain of salt. In terms of updates, the post office, we're working on a place to reestablish the kiosk that had been in front of the old post office, and we're trying to get it set up to be in the new post office. This has all been cleaned and refurbished and not ready to fall over. So thanks for that. We're working on the signage. I went over this afternoon and saw that the striping had been done in the parking lot. I will assure you that the postal service is looking to get this done as quickly as they can. They started paying rent on the building on September 1st, so they have all sorts of incentive to get this thing done. And there should be landscaping happening this fall, probably another month or six weeks, probably.
Once they finish the build-up.
Once they finish the build-up. Yep. What is the date of the completion? Ladies and gentlemen, I wish I knew. At this point, I did see that one of the problems they had had is they had had a custom-built countertop that had been busted, and a new one was ordered. And I saw today that it had been delivered, and that was one of the delays. So hopefully, things will progress pretty quickly from here on out. On better news, patios, I understand, should likely be open by the end of October, which will be very exciting. So we're looking forward to that. I also want to tell you that we have been doing some work to build trails, thanks to Jimmy Deberg doing the initial work and Joe Wink helping with the maintain it. We have a trail now that goes from Mount Vernon down to Leggett Lane and, or down to the wastewater facility, and then you can walk through the pasture over to Leggett Lane. And we are working with a fellow who did the trail in Sperryville, and he's gotten back to me with some initial stuff. He's already mapped it out for a trail from the post office that will go along Warren Avenue, but kind of meander through the meadow there by the lake, thanks to Drew letting us use his property. That will go up to Gay Street, so that we'll have a way to walk down to the post office whenever it does open. And I also want to mention, we received a letter of resignation from Butch Zindell, as Chair of the Architectural Review Board. And Butch, besides running a successful real estate firm here in town and having a successful construction business, served as a member of the Architectural Review Board for a number of years and was its Chair. He filled in for, succeeded Ernesto and did an admirable job as the Chair of the Architectural Review Board. We will miss his service and his contributions dearly. And so I personally and also on behalf of the council want to give a thank you to Butch for all his service. I'm also excited to know that the board selected Drew Mitchell as their new Chair.
Yay!
And finally, Mr. O'Connell, would you please stand?
Yes, Patrick, stand. Stand, stay.
So we, I have already read this to the public record, so I'm not going to read it again, but we wanted to recognize lifetime of achievements of the Inn at Uta Washington. And we took the resolution that the town signed, and we did this on the 23rd day of May, and we waited until now, and we wanted to present this to you.
Thank you so much.
Put this over here for public viewing, if you would.
That's a good idea.
All right, great. Thank you. We are so fortunate to be in this place for so long, and the best is yet to come.
Amen to that. All right. And that is my long and beandering mayor's report. Report from the Planning Commission?
No.
All right, thank you.
Oh, really?
Architectural Review Board?
No.
All right, thank you. Treasurers' report?
Thank you. This will be short and sweet. I've been out of town, so you don't have to look at the numbers, numbers to date of the budget. I'll have that for you this week. I'll email it out, and then we can present it so everybody can have it next month. On the bills to be paid, you can see some substantial numbers, but nothing out of the unusual, the repairs we've already talked about. Barbara, anything that you want to point out to it? Nothing that I saw looked anything?
The only question I have would be the payroll tax adjustment?
Payroll tax adjustment?
To the IRS. Is that a regular quarterly?
Yes.
Adjustment?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other questions from members of the Town Council about the bills to be paid? If not, I presume that you're making a motion?
I make a motion to approve the bills to be paid.
We have, thank you, Mary Ann. Any questions? Then roll call vote to approve bills to be paid. Jean?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The bills are approved.
Just a reminder to everybody to please use your microphone.
Public Works Committee?
Ta-da! Thanks. So busy, busy month and month ahead for getting our infrastructure under control here. So we are going to work through three of the 22 priority items that the ESS has flagged for us for repairs to the sewer plant. That's going to be about $8,000. We're waiting on the final bit for that. Purchase four new pumps for the town. This will give us some bench strength for the continuing fail ratio. We still aren't ahead of that. That'll be another $10,000. And then we are going to do the first seven of 17 meters in town that are unreadable before we start working on some other meters. And just before arriving this evening, we received a new contract proposal from the ESS. That adds up to about $40,000 of the $65,882 we received under the LEAF plan. So we'll be using those pumps to do this first round of infrastructure work.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bennett?
No new zoning or land use applications this past month. I'll just mention that the Board of Zoning Appeals will hold two hearings here on October the 8th, beginning at 4:00 PM. Request for a variance by Ms. Eagle for the apple shed lot to build a house where the setbacks are essentially one to five feet instead of the required 15 to 30 feet under the ordinance. And the second item is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision in an application interpreting a particular ordinance. Their interpretation was that this ordinance allowed the expansion of a non-conforming structure. In my opinion stated, it allows an expansion of a structure back to the size it was on the date that the ordinance was adopted. So the size of a structure is sort of grandfathered if there's an ordinance change, and that'll be coming up also.
At the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Mr. Bennett, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a, under old business, we have a vacancy on the Architectural Review Board. Town Clerk Barbara, did we have any applications?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We have one application?
One application.
Okay. And did we, have we, and was the deadline for applications come and gone?
Yes.
Okay. So we're closing all, all applications. And do you have some information?
Yes, Deb Harris, the co-owner of the Gay Street Inn, has applied in writing to the Town Clerk to be appointed to the Architectural Review Board.
All right.
Shall I make a motion?
If you would.
I would like to make a motion that Deb Harris be appointed to the ARB.
To fill the vacancy.
To fill a vacancy of Butch.
Yep. And a second from Mary Ann. Thank you. Any discussion? I have worked with Deb on a couple of different committees and found that she has been hard working, and I would look forward to the fruits of her efforts on behalf of the town. Any other comments? All right. Roll call vote to approve the appointment of Deb Harris to the Architectural Review Board. Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Deb Harris, I don't know if you're here tonight, but if you-
She's not. She did send her apologies.
All right. But we are grateful.
Mm-hmm.
And next, we have new business. The first thing we will have is a public hearing to discuss, discuss a special use permit application for the Rush River Commons, an application to extend the Sewer Service District for the Rush River Commons, and rezoning a portion of the property for Rush River Commons. Before we go forward, the information has been available, and it has been publicized as appropriate. And I ask that you raise your hand if you wish to make comment, and when you do, please go up to the microphone and speak there, give your name and whether you're a resident of the town or elsewhere, and then go from there. Are there any comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I would just make absolutely clear, it's a public hearing concurrently on all three applications.
And should we have-
If anybody's got anything to say about any of it, now's the time.
And should we have a presentation from the Rush River Commons first?
That's discretion of the Chair.
All right. I would go ahead, let's go ahead and have, because there are a lot of people here who've not had a chance to hear.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for the opportunity to make a presentation. So if you all seem here, if you all want to come up to your slide here. Please feel free to answer some questions. And we mentioned information that the zoning administration and our council have worked on all the details and just that. Is it, can you hear me okay with this? Great. Uh, thank you. I'm not allowing saying this. Thank you. Good evenings, Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Steve Flesko, I'm with State of Arms, and I'm Civil Engineer Project Manager for the project. And experience working with all the members of the town, Planning Commission staff, and we're pleased to be here tonight to, to present our case to you and hopefully answer any questions that you might have tonight. So for those who aren't totally familiar with the site, we're out here at the freeway and then Warren Avenue, and the site is right in here. And it's, there's two parts to the site. The overall site's about a little over nine acres, and the boundary between the town and the county runs roughly through the middle of the site. So the portion that's in the town is a little over five acres, and that's what we're dealing with tonight, and that's kind of Phase 1 of the project. We've done some conceptual studies for Phase 2, but we're really just focused tonight on the Phase 1, the portion that's in the town. A little bigger graphic, again, that just shows you the boundaries of the property. And I came on board to the project end of last year, and there was other members of the team that were doing some conceptual work, I think, beginning last summer. And we submitted our formal application for this in April of this year. So we've been working on this quite a while. My role coming in was to really dive into the, the issues on the site. And that's my background. I'm a civil engineer, and I also do land planning. And one of the visions that our client Chuck had for this is he wanted the project to be very environmentally sensitive. Down the middle of the site, there's a stream, and there's another little stream that goes over here to Drew's property, over to, to his property. And we've got a number of wetlands through the site. We've documented where all the wetlands are. We've gotten certification from the Corps of Engineers to, you know, locate these areas. And one of our primary objectives is to respect those wetlands, respect the stream corridor, and make this a highly environmentally sensitive project. And so that's been one of our overarching goals. The other thing that we're trying to do is to create a project that's a benefit for both residents of the town and residents of the county. And hence, part of the name Rush River Commons is very important, and it says a lot about our respect for the environment and also trying to create something that benefits everybody in the community. It's not exclusively a town project, it's for the benefit of everyone. So this is the site plan, and I'm going to put it this direction, because that's, up at the top is Warren Avenue, and then this is Leggett Lane that goes down here. The town treatment plant is down here, and then the new post office is in the direction over here. And for this initial phase of the project, Phase 1, all of our access is going to be off Leggett Lane. We're not going to have any road access to Warren Avenue. And the project basically has two halves. The north half is kind of our commercial area, and we're showing two buildings. There's an office building here that's going to have frontage directly to Warren Avenue, and Jordan's going to tell you more about the architectural design for those building, for that building. And then we have a building here that's planned for the food pantry, and there's associated parking in front of there. There's an area here for recycling and trash, and there's a little connecting colonnade between the two. This area here is going to be part of our stormwater management system. It's going to be a little infiltration area that's going to be nicely landscaped. And then, as you go to the southern part of the site, we're showing 20 residential units. We have two building types. There are eight units here that are in a townhouse-style architecture. All the buildings, commercial and residential, maximum of two stories. There's nothing that's above three stories. The townhouse buildings here will be closer to Leggett, and then we have two buildings here that are what I would call stacked flats. So on the ground floor, there'll be four one-bedroom units, and then there'll be stairways that go up, external stairways that go up to two-bedroom units on the top levels. And in the middle, we've got a little park area. And then for circulation and parking, we have an entrance here and an exit here, and this parking area serves commercial area. And then we have a parking area here and a parking area here, and that serves the residential Couple of things just to point out, it's a very tight and compact site. We have a stream running through the middle of the site. We have to have buffers from the stream that's required in the town ordinances. And then we also did a study to look at what the floodplain limits are for this corridor. It's not in a FEMA floodplain, but we wanted to make sure that we understood the hydrology of this area and set the building heights appropriately, so there won't be any flooding issues. For town, for utilities, there's a water main that runs along Leggett, and we'll connect to that. We've coordinated that with the town and their engineering folks. For sewer, we will do what a lot of buildings in town do, they use a grinder pump system. And we'll have several grinder pumps. We'll have one for the office, one for the food pantry, perhaps a couple down here that we'll determine in final engineering. And then we'll run a force main through the project, and we'll take it right in to the town treatment plant. We won't take it out into the street. We're too low from a gravity situation to do that. So that's how we'll handle water and sewer. Telephone, cable, power, we'll bring that in underground from the, from the top of the site where those utilities are. And then probably one of our most challenging things on the site has been stormwater management. It's a very tight site. So those of you who've watched the post office, they have underground storage for their stormwater management. We're going to do the similar thing. This is drawing I like, but not a lot. I'm a civil engineer, so a lot of folks might, might, it's kind of busy. But we're going to have three underground stormwater containment areas, one here, one here, and one here. So all the surface runoff that's generated from the roofs, parking areas and sidewalk, all of those will work their way through these devices and this device here and get filtered, controlled before it goes into the stream system. The design of it is regulated by state DEQ, and the town ordinances will follow that. And in our conceptual design, that's how we've located and sized all these. What else? We have, to protect us from the flood situation, a lot of these buildings are going to be elevated compared to where they are today. If you've been out there to look at the site, we did a site tour, which I think was very helpful. We thank everybody who came out to that. We staked out where the buildings were, so people could get a feel of how close things were to the road and to each other, and I think that helped everybody visualize what we were trying to do. So one of the things that'll be a feature is we're going to have some retaining walls that go along the edge of the site. And again, that's to help us get the buildings up, above the flood levels.
100-year?
100-year flood, correct. And just a nuance for the stormwater management, when we design these systems, when the pipes that come out of them go to the stream system, where the pipes exit out, they have to be above the 10-year storm event where they, where they outfall. For those who don't know much about stormwater management, we do design, we look at a one-year storm to 10 and 100. And in the olden days, roughly, you could expect a 100-year storm to happen once every 100 years. Global warming and stuff, it's a little more frequent. So, you know, your one- and two-year storms are most frequent. We see those a lot. And so now 10-year storms, you know, seem to be like 100-year storms, because they're all occurring more frequently. But know that no water is going directly to the streams. Everything's being treated and controlled in that, in that regard. So let's see. And I will end on this one, turn it over for more interesting stuff to Jordan, but this is our concept rendering, so you can kind of get a 3D view of what's going on. So again, this is Warren Avenue. This is Leggett Lane. The post office is here, and then we have our commercial area. This would be an office building, and then this is the food pantry, and then this is the residential area here with the townhouse-style buildings and then the two stacked flat buildings, and then the stream corridor, which we're, we're trying to maintain and protect. So I'll turn it over to Jordan, and then if there's questions, we're certainly available to, to answer anything you have for us.
Good to be with everyone. My name's Jordan Goldstein. I am an architect with Gensler, also a Flint Hill resident. So for those that haven't had a chance to get familiar with this project and the drawings, I'm going to do a walkthrough of the architectural design direction for the project, and hopefully, am I blocking folks here? Can we see everyone? Okay. So when we were brought onto the project, one of the things that we wanted to do was rather than just start drawing buildings, was understand what are some of the architectural details that are prevalent in the town. So we spent several days going around the town and looking at, and this is just some of the imagery that we took, looking at some of the typology, the architectural typology- of the imagery that we took, looking at some of the typology, the architectural typologies that we see in the town. And some of the things that were really striking to us is the simple geometries that you see with the buildings. The buildings aren't overly complex from a geometric standpoint, and that creates the beauty that we appreciate. The pitching of the roofs, the balconies that we see, the two-story balconies that you certainly see coming in with the inn, and then also the use of porches, front porches being able to be a welcoming front door to any of the buildings, but also how they meet the street. There are buildings that are certainly in town that have close proximity to the street, so we looked at how they're doing that, how are they addressing the street. So as we started to think about that, we also looked at what is the materiality of the buildings that are in the town. So from wood siding that you see here, stucco, the use of brick on the church, or this building is an example, and starting to think about how can we weave together a simple vocabulary of materials and a simple vocabulary from a geometric standpoint that helps define the buildings for this project. So I'll start off here. Thanks, Stephen. And Stephen mentioned the Warren Avenue, Leggett Lane intersection, which is right here where I'm pointing. And the post office, for those, just to orient everyone, is right here. So we looked at the first two buildings here, the building that's parallel to Warren Avenue.
Do you mind stepping back just a little bit? We have two or three council members.
Oh, sure. Yeah, let's see. Any more rope here? How's that better? How's that better?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Great. So when we looked at these buildings, one of the things that stood out to us was the opportunity to create a space here that helps provide orientation when you come onto the site. As Stephen mentioned, it's a tight site with the width from Leggett Lane to the stream that's going right over here. And with the buffer and the setbacks, being able to utilize that space and make it as comfortable as possible from an experiential standpoint. So what you're seeing here is the office building that Stephen mentioned. The corner of that office building on the ground level has roughly about a 1,500-square-foot retail space. Adjacent to that is a lobby space for the building, it's a two-story building, and an office portion next to that and above that office. What you're seeing here, and also what you see in this image, this three-dimensional sketch, is the jogging of the building. And when we looked at this with the Warren Avenue facade, we wanted to break up that mass of that building, help it become, in a sense, almost feeling like it's two buildings. And then use that center zone that you see here, where I'm pointing on the plan, as an opportunity to bring windows into the site, large windows. Why? Because that's where the staircase and the vertical circulation point is the building. It's a two-story building. We want this building to be fully universal access from an ADA standpoint. So it's not just stairs, it's also an elevator. So we're able to pull the elevator on the inside of that building, have the stairs wrap around that, and then being able to have these windows that you see here acts as a reveal between the two forms of the office building. What you're seeing also is the treatment that we're suggesting for an architectural direction of wood siding, punctured windows, similar to some of the buildings that were on the prior image. And then as you come around towards the front, facing to the Leggett Lane side, the opportunity for a covered porch. So perhaps, for instance, in the retail scenario, that there's an opportunity to open the doors, have a front porch that you could come out on facing the post office. Adjacent to this, with the food pantry here, we wanted to also create a covered connection between these two buildings. So what you're seeing where I'm pointing right now is a covered walkway that I'll show in a three-dimensional sketch that connects the two buildings. And what it also does is it creates a courtyard right over here that does double duty. It creates a really nice intimate space between the two buildings that, from a landscape standpoint, will be wonderful to be able to be out on. But it also works from a stormwater management standpoint to help with water retention and also some irrigation for the vegetation that's around there. The building, the sketch that you see up here is looking at the two-story building from the Warren Avenue side. And as you're coming around on Warren Avenue, we're showing a two-story porch scenario, which is the east face of the building. So that's this side of the building, and that's right over here in the sketch. If I pull up this corner view. Thank you, Stephen. This is how architects and engineers work together. So what you're seeing right here in yellow is that lobby space between the two buildings. So that lobby actually worked out well for us because it actually created that reveal that allowed us to break up the mass of the building. So volumetrically, what you're getting is really, in a sense, feeling like kind of Building A, Building B, and then this setback creates the glazed window condition. You see the stairs wrapping around? That landing is what you would see through the windows. So an opportunity for, you can imagine, seeing a nice staircase in there with a chandelier, and then you're wrapping around the elevator. So the elevator doesn't present a dead wall to the facade of the building. It pulls in. That creates a comfortable lobby that provides access, vestibule access for winter conditions. Entry into the office, entry into the retail, shared bathroom condition. And then you see the dash line over here. That's the front, single-level porch to the west side, double-level porch, this dash line to the east side. When we pull back a little bit, we get an opportunity to see the two buildings together. And this is important for the food pantry. The food pantry is a one-level building. But we didn't want to make it feel, from the inside standpoint, like a one-level building. We also wanted it to work together with the other building adjacent to it. So the west side of the food pantry is taller. It actually reads as a two-story building. Why is that? It allows us to do two things. One, creates a beautiful kind of connection point for the covered porch and walkway that comes across and connects the two buildings. The other is it allows there to be higher windows, what we call clerestory windows, in the upper part of the west side of the building. Brings natural light into the food pantry and allows to use less electrical energy for lighting the space. And that will be open ceiling, so when you're in the food pantry, it'll be a higher-volume space within, so it'll be more comfortable experience within it. The area that you see in the front is the parking for both buildings, and then the area between is that courtyard that I mentioned. This is a view looking at the front of the food pantry. Called an elevation drawing. So you're seeing a suggestion of a covered porch going across, covered walkway, columns, entryway for the food pantry on the north side of the building, windows in, and then an opportunity, one of the things we did, we spent time with the food pantry team talking about how do you deal with the difference in volume between a given day during the week versus, say, a Thanksgiving? And being able to use the parking area, also where we're having loading access, to be able to get more volume of people to move through there on those couple days of the year where you do have that opportunity. As we move back on the site, Stephen alluded to the residential. So it's very important for us, for the residential, that we didn't want this to just feel like one building. So we broke this into three. And then within the three, we looked at actually how we can further break up the massing of the buildings, not just through the roof line, but also through architecturally, I'll walk through the fronts of the buildings. So what you're seeing here are eight townhouses. The roof line and the face of the buildings actually step back. It stepped back in here to actually create this courtyard between all three buildings. So these are eight two-level townhouses that are two- and three-bedroom, so again, two levels. And then these two smaller buildings here are two over four. So two two-bedroom units, as Stephen mentioned, over four one-bedroom units. The four one-bedroom units have their entryways off this main alley right here, this promenade, walkway, and then on the backside of the two buildings. And then, as Stephen mentioned, there'd be staircase up for the access to the units above. So 20 total residential units. But also, when we were thinking about that, we didn't want this to be a scenario where there's a drive all the way through, there was no comfortable place to walk and no good areas to park. So the parking is oriented north and south. There's a walkway that connects, goes through, passes the green, the main courtyard here, and connects to the food pantry and the commercial and retail space. So it's all interconnected, so you can walk comfortably across the site. When we get into how do these buildings look from a design direction standpoint, these are just two different studies for the two-over-four. And for this, we were looking at some of the architectural language that I mentioned earlier. How can that work itself into these two buildings? So what you're seeing here is the idea, and this particular one, on the left, this is one concept. This is the second concept for the same building. So looking at a front porch scenario that's two stories, balcony on the second level, front porch on the ground level, and that these are two units here. These are really four, because it's one, two, and then behind that are two more, right? And then this is using a gable roof going north-south, and then on the east and west side, you're getting a shed dormer condition, which creates the porch. Over here, this is one roof line going across. This shed roof condition goes all the way up, and you're seeing windows here and the porches on the side. Balcony up above, front porch on the lower level. These are the stairs to the upper units beyond. When we go, last drawing, over to the townhouses, this was an interesting study for us. So it's a single roof line height, but if you remember from the plan, I showed how the roofs jog. So it's not just one row, right? So there's two on the ends, two-two, and four in the middle. The four in the middle pull back slightly. It's the same roof height going across. You see opportunities for chimneys. And then being able to pop forward and organize the entry for the townhouses. So we grouped those. So instead of feeling like there's eight doorways all separated, we grouped those and orient with porches so that creates some common focal points here and on the end, and then tucked those back behind these bay conditions. So you get a little bit more dynamism in the facade, a little bit more energy in terms of how it reads. That also creates balcony conditions for the upper level of these townhomes. And this would be a similar elevation on the backside facing Leggett Lane, because we didn't want to have a backside to this building. We wanted it to feel like there's two fronts. So I'll stop here, and we can certainly, I know, I think John wanted to add, and Chuck wanted to add something here.
Whoops, Chuck? Hang on a sec, please. I can't be denied, sir.
Well, we know that.
Yes, yes. If you'd just bear with, spare me a moment here, sir. What I wanted to do was to say, this is all lovely, but how do you know it's going to happen? And that brings us to the legal process, which you're considering this evening. The world of land use law, you have by right development according to the existing zoning. This property is zoned RA, I believe is the exact designation, and that would not permit this project to be developed as it is. You have conditional zoning, which is proffers and that sort of thing, but what the county is, the town has chosen to do is to use a planned unit development special use permit for this process, as we know. Well, what does that mean? What that means, for those who aren't intimately familiar with the processes, we are, is that the town writes the conditions that are applicable to the use of this property according to what these designs are and what has been worked out with the town and with its staff. I'm not going to go through those conditions in detail because you've heard them before, and if you won't hear them again, you can get them from Mr. Bennett.
And we also have it. It should be accessible to everybody.
They are. Yes, sir. But I'm just going to, I'm going to do chunks about what they are. Special use permit conditions are intended to provide the detail of the project in a binding format, because a special use permit condition becomes law once it's approved. It's not pie in the sky. It is binding on the development of this property, on the grantee of the permit, and all successors and assigns. Conditions are also designed to mitigate impact of concerns that may have been identified during the course of the review by the town and its staff. It is a way to make commitments to the town to certain improvements that are deemed beneficial. So for example, in this circumstance, there are improvements to Leggett Lane, which will be made and are now committed to. There are obviously commitments to join into the public sewer and water system, but a special commitment has been made to advance the construction of the sewer connection to the northeast corner or northwest corner, I never can remember, but up to the corner of the property at Warren, even as the project may not yet be completely under construction, so that that connection is already in line by a date certain. There are explicit limitations on the uses that may be made of the property. So it's not everything that we could think of, nor is it everything your ordinance permits. There are limitations on what can be done. The discussion of how the housing may be used has been specifically detailed here so that we may provide affordable housing and workforce housing through these units. It was an agreement that we reached in our negotiations with the town. Those are things that you can't otherwise do unless those conditions have been placed into the special use permit and that have been worked out in discussions and written by the town. I wanted to be clear that this is not something that's pie in the sky. There are commitments to the development according to the development plan. All of these architectural diagrams have got to be brought to your ARB and approved before anything can be constructed. Site plans have got to be submitted and approved. So it's not simply words spoken to you, it's words written for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, he just last touched on the fact that we have 20 units of affordable housing. Out of the 20 units, four units can be market rate units, and all the rest are at a prescribed lower level than that to be able to make affordable housing available, as well as senior housing available. We have eight flats in there and that sort of stuff. So that's a big plus, and all of these things came from our discussions with the planning commission and the town council previously. Secondly, we've had our engineer and our architect and our attorney talk, but we haven't had the people talk about this wetland in this area here. And I'm personally very excited about it. We started the project by my telling everybody that I wanted to make an asset out of these wetlands in here. There are, in fact, 11 designated wetlands already that we've identified in here. And this stream will be, take a little bit more meandering shape than it does right now as we go forward, and there will be a walking trail through there, coming up the other side, that may or may not ultimately connect to the other part of the project. But there will be, there will be sort of natural trails in this part of things, and there'll be bridges over the stream on both ends as well, so that it'll be an enjoyable walking space and a being space, as it were, just for everybody to use. And so I thank you all for the chance to make this presentation, and we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ackery. Now we will go ahead and open up to the public under the conditions that I requested earlier. Do we have anybody who would like to make comments or have questions? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name is Rachel Escobar, and I live in Flint Hill. Thank you all for allowing me a brief moment to speak to you. As I said, my name is Rachel Escobar, maiden name Gall, and I was born and raised in Castleton, Virginia, where my parents, Paul and Beth Gall, still reside. Since graduating high school here in 2005, I've been blessed to, in a sense, boomerang out and experience lots of different people and places, confirming that Rappahannock County is truly the one-of-a-kind place I always knew it to be and anxiously awaited to return back to for good. My husband and I recently bought our forever home in Flint Hill, where we plan on raising our family and pouring into the community that has shaped me and means so very much to my soul. I've been watching, reading, and listening from afar the issues and discussions that have been taking place in Rappahannock County and trying to gauge where I feel my support must go. I share in the impassioned sentiments that both sides of this discussion offer. Everyone who has chosen to make Rappahannock County their home has most likely done so for one of two reasons: its rural character or the people. On one hand, no one wants to see Rappahannock County's scenery develop or evolve into the type of landscape so many of its current residents are seeking to escape. On the other hand, no one wants to see Rappahannock County become an almost endangered species, if you will, because of our refusal or fear to bend and flow to the realistic needs, just as our rivers and mountainous landscape do. However, the harsh, and for a born-and-bred local such as myself, alarming truth is that where Rappahannock County finds itself is smack dab in the middle of both arguments, but not in a beneficial way. In other words, the landscape, scenery, and demographics are changing while simultaneously becoming endangered in a way because of our fear to creatively evolve. The Rush River Common plans and discussion feel like a gentle and needed willingness to move towards the direction of growth and preservation. Growth doesn't always mean in size, as I often remind my students, growth often means the betterment of something. The Rush River Common's purpose- The Rush River Commons' purpose, I believe, will perfectly serve a few of our communities' pressing needs and do so while preserving the integrity of the beautiful landscape that we all love to call home. From the food pantry and nonprofit office space to affordable and inviting living spaces that will hopefully be filled with young, full-time families who wish to further invest in the county such as I do, the Rush River Commons should not be seen as a gateway to further unwanted development, but rather as a desirable addition to help serve the people who call this place home. Please know that I, personally, am cripplingly sentimental, forever attached to things that hold a special place in my heart or memories, and therefore I'm hesitant to change, as some of you may be. Just this weekend, standing in Headmasters Pub waiting for lunch, I couldn't help but long to close my eyes and be taken back to the days of shopping in the bustling Emporium, and instead had to settle for telling my husband what it was like. What a warm memory, but I too must acknowledge that in order for Rappahannock County to stay a place where its full-time residents can not only live but thrive, we must not be afraid to take small steps towards collaboratively and creatively finding solutions, one of which I believe is the Rush River Commons. If we are fearless in our willingness to add an attraction for the wonderful folks who pass through Rappahannock County throughout the year, we must be even more so in our willingness to do what's needed to serve our residents. And what better way to do so than for everyone who loves and appreciates Rappahannock County for just what it is to all come together and decide what its future can look like? One of my favorite Tim McGraw songs is entitled "Humble and Kind," and in one of his final lyrics, he says, "When you get where you're going, don't forget to turn back around and help the next one in line. Always stay humble and kind. Let us work together to help the next one in line." Thank you.
Thank you for those lovely comments.
Rachel, Rachel, would, would you be kind enough to give that, I see you've written it down, to give that to Barbara so that we can put it into our minutes for the meeting? Thank you.
Are there any, any other, anybody else would like to make comments? Yes.
Yes, my name is Sharon Propper, and I'm kind of in charge of the little houses down next to the post office. I was reading in the Rappahannock News a couple of weeks ago about the water situation going into the Rush River, and I guess it was a, some situation talking about basically increasing the water, which, if you have the Rush River housing, that would increase the wastewater going into the Rush River. I was wondering about the treatment of that water, because the park is right there, and the people from school, they bring their kids there for the park on buses and things to go down and play in the water when it's really a hot day or something. And also, that water also from the Rush River goes down to the swimming hole at Rock Mills. So I was concerned about the cleanliness of the water that was going in, because it did say that some solids and some bacteria and whatever, because I had a cousin that had a light cut on arm going in the Rock Mills and ended up getting bacteria in that hospital. So I was just concerned about the, the water. Is it any way, I know they were saying about little ponds that they had under to collect the, the drainage water. I was thinking that could also, I guess they said that could also be useful watering the plants or whatever, but they said something about treating that water. I was wondering, why does the runoff water have to be treated?
Brad, do you want to answer?
Okay, the, the runoff that they're talking about, the retention basins
Yes.
are designed with natural elements. It's no different than the water passing through the wetlands as they are today. But because you're going to be putting in hard surfaces, you're going to be putting in roofs, okay? That water, the rain that falls on the land is now going to be collected and directed through these retention systems, much like it's done at the post office, so that there's a natural, relaxed gravitation of the water. You don't get, you know, fast movements, you don't get erosion. And again, as that water is passing through the system, who actually go into the streams, the natural materials, there may be cattails, there may be other plants that are going to naturally filter that water. So it's not going to be treated by the wastewater treatment plant, it's basically going to be treated by nature.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. When I heard "treated," I was like, what do you mean "treat that?" Because that's the natural water going through.
Right.
What is happening to that water to have to be treated is what...
Right. So, so nature, nature will, will treat that water, and again, the idea of the retention systems is to avoid fast-moving water that's going to erode.
Yes, I understood that, yes.
Right.
Before you go on to the next part, which was about the wastewater, Steve, is there, is that sound correct? Is there anything that you want to add to that?
Yeah, it, that's basically correct. So when, when we design stormwater systems, you know, so you go back in the olden days, you know, when you pave stuff, everything ran directly into the streams and rivers. So if there was something on the pavement, it ended up in the river. So now, with, you know, legislation that came about in the 80s, Clean Water Act and everything, and on the state level, we've got regulations by DEQ, we're required to do two things for our stormwater. We have to deal with quantity and quality. So from the quantity perspective, as Brad was saying, we have to make sure that the amount of water that runs off our site doesn't go off any faster than it was in its natural condition. That's very important, because it helps protect the streams from excessive erosion. And for those who've been up to northern Virginia, and you look in the older neighborhoods there where there's little streams and everything, tremendous erosion, because there was no, back in the day when those were developed, there was no stormwater management. So as things kept getting more impervious, more and more water's going into those systems, and they can't control or slow down the erosion. So they've got huge problems with that. Now DEQ makes us, regulates us and says, no, you have to slow the water down, like the post office used the vault system. So the water goes in there, when there's a big storm, it holds it, and then it lets it out very slowly. So that's the quantity aspect. The quality aspect is, we have to address, the principal pollutants that come off of runoff is phosphorus and nitrogen. So DEQ has very specific regulations of what we're allowed to discharge into natural systems. So within these devices that we do, there is filtration, there's time where the water sits in the retention where phosphorus and nitrogen drop out of the system, so that when we discharge, we're discharging at lower rates than, you know, in the previous conditions. So again, we're trying to protect water quality. Trash and stuff that comes off, debris gets collected, and it's held in these systems, and then we occasionally have to clean them out for that. So in theory, if we're doing our job right, the water that we're putting into the streams ought to be as good or better than, than what's going in there today.
Okay, I have, the other question was about the water that's going into the river.
But that goes back now to...
For the septic.
So the, the discharge from the waste treatment plant does go in the Rush, Rush River?
Yes.
Okay. That is monitored every day. You can go to the town office, and you can see the reports of the quality of the effluent. We surpass the state's requirements for the water discharge. We produce a very, very high-quality effluent. Now granted, there's occasions when something happens and, you know, but we're on top of that, so we, we notify DEQ, and they're aware of it and everything else. The water is purified before it's released to the river, okay? So if you encountered something, or one of your relatives encountered a situation of bacteria, I'm not going to say it couldn't have come from the treatment plant, but it's probably not likely. It may have been naturally occurring, you know? But as far as, as it relates to the Rush River Commons project, all of the wastewater generated will be sent to the wastewater plant. We have adequate capacity, so we'll be able to treat all of those discharges for the food pantry, the office building, the housing units, and still maintain the same level of quality of water that's being discharged into the river.
I was wondering if there's any way, I brought it up years ago when we first started doing the project, town septic system. But if there's to be like a pond where the water would go before it goes to the river, and maybe put fish in there so...
There's, there's no, there's no space or room to do something of that nature. If we had another 50 acres, then yeah, those are, you know, options that can be done. We don't have the space to do that, so the plant was designed to do a direct discharge into the Rush River.
And it means the environmental...
Say we just got the quarterly report earlier today.
Sharon, Sharon, one point, because I'm a certified stream monitor for the county through the Old Ragmaster Naturalist, and we do stream monitor the Rush River before the plant and way down after the plant, and down after the plant is better quality than what we find above. So just, I just wanted you to know that it's monitored by a lot of different groups.
Now, a few years ago, I remember seeing a big truck, some kind of a, something on the back. It had stop double, just passed Baldwin, kind of late at night. It had a hose, something, whatever, I don't know what that...
At this point, that, I think that's...
I know, that's, but I'm just saying that I've seen that, that has nothing to do...
Right.
I've seen that, and I was wondering, you know, if I get some, see something like that again, should I kind of try to report that or something?
Call, call the sheriff's office.
Yeah, call the sheriff's office.
Because I mean, it was kind of late, and I was wondering why they had a truck sitting on the bridge there with the pipe down the corner.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, sir.
When this plant was built, it was the state-of-the-art plant. It was actually the cleanest facility of its type in the state. And anyone that was sitting in on discussions, reluctant to bring this back up, but you could drink the water.
I will move on that. There are...
I need to break this pause.
Are there any other comments from members of the public? Yes, I have one here.
Hi, I'm Diane McPherson. My husband, John, and I owned Three Blacksmith's Restaurant up until a couple of weeks ago, and before that, the Foster Harris House Bed and Breakfast here in town. We've been here for 18 years, making our sole living here in Rappahannock County, and we are fully in support of the Rush River Commons project because we see a dire need for places for people to live, especially young people, but older people too. Our employees at the Three Blacksmith's, we had five full-time employees. None of them could live in the county, and we, in fact, the new owners who are there now are living in temporary housing, because they can't find a place to live with their family of three children. So we want to know that small businesses like ours can thrive in a county like this. We've been very lucky to be able to do it for as long as we have, but I worry that people who want to start businesses in this county, it's hard enough to find good help, but it's much harder if they can't find places to live nearby so that they stay. Like, we worry that the staff that we have, that we, one of the hardest parts about selling our restaurant was leaving our wonderful staff behind, because we love them so much, and we worry they might not stay because they don't have any place in the county to live, so it isn't a long-term prospect for them at this point. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this.
All right, thank you.
Gary Achill, I'm in Hampton District of the county. Two quick things. One, a couple of meetings ago, I made a comment about how I hope that the town's process might serve as an inspiration for how we go forward beyond the town's boundaries in the county. And a speaker, a delightful woman, who I got to know a little bit that night, followed me and said, oh, she hoped it didn't, because she didn't want to see any development, even like this, anywhere in the county, because it would change the character of the county. So since then, I've had this conversation with a number of people, and I think we just all have to be aware that we are at a, a critical moment in the county. There are two very different points of view. The one is, do everything possible so that nothing changes. And the other view is, do everything possible so that the change that comes is what we want. What benefits the county, preserves its unique character, and allows other people to live and thrive and prosper and love this place like we do. So I think there are two very clear points of view. So tonight, I just want to remind folks that not only are you making a decision about a product, which you've had a wonderful presentation, again, every time I hear it, it gets better, but you're also making a decision about a process. You are essentially, if you vote to approve this, putting your stamp of approval on the planned unit development ordinance and on two years plus of a process that brought you to tonight. I want to, again, just reinforce everything Mr. Foot said. If you sat down as the, as the town council and hired hundreds of thousands of dollars worth, worth of designers and civil engineers and architects, and you guys came up with the product, you would have no more control than you'd have tonight by approving this proposal. The Planning Commission and the town council, the elected representatives of this town, on behalf of the town, and I would say the county, have gone over and over almost every detail. Now, you didn't pick the faucets, and you don't know what kind of hardware is going to be on the front doors yet.
Yet.
But goodness, anyone who's ever built a house, you guys have done everything a homeowner would do to make sure that when construction starts, it's the home of your dreams. So let's make it clear tonight that this town council, in a historic vote, has the opportunity not only to approve an incredible product, but also to put its stamp of approval on a process that I believe works. And I stand it up again tonight and say, it's a process that needs to continue to work for the good of everything that we all dear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the, from the public? If not, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I want to thank everyone again for their comments, their questions, and their thoughts during the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at a point now where we have three items in front of us. The first is a conditions of a special use permit for the Rush River Commons. The special use permit has, I think it was 25 conditions, but...
27.
27. 27 conditions that have been vetted thoroughly. And so I go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the special use permit for the Rush River Commons.
I so move. Who are you trying to beat me to that?
Never again.
I will let Dale move, and Joe second. Thank you.
Mayor, on the special use permit, the council needs to consider the, there's four, some general conditions for any special use permit before you can actually vote on the special use permit itself. And typically, what I, what's done is I read those and ask how everybody votes and go through those.
So do we do a roll call vote on each of those things?
On each one, yes.
Okay. So we will hold off on the motion until we've read these, and we will vote on these conditions.
Aren't you suggesting that we didn't tell before? We're not Congress, we actually read these things.
Okay. So the issuance of a special use permit is subject to the general standards in Article 6-1-1 of the town zoning ordinance. It reads, "The town governing body may issue a special use permit if it finds that the use for which the permit is sought..." And then there are four conditions. I'll read those. First condition, "will not be hazardous or injurious to or in conflict with the predominant character of the neighborhood, considering its the size and location of the use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved, the site layout, and access roads." How say each of you?
Yes.
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 B...
B- B, "will not adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use." How say each of you?
Yes.
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 C, "will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood or to the quiet enjoyment of property or improvements in the neighborhood." How say each of you?
Yes.
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 And the final general standard, D, "will be in accord with the provisions of the ordinance and the plan of use and developed, development embodied therein, as well as in accord with such comprehensive plans or parts thereof from time to time adopted by the governing body." How say each of you?
Yes.
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 Now, it's ready to vote on the motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second to the motion. Is there any other comments from members of the town council on the motion?
I would like to, I would like to make, once again, I just want to reiterate that we wouldn't be at this point with this incredible detailed piece of paper if the team of the planning commission and the Rush River Commons team didn't work so closely together for all these months. And I just think that is absolutely incredible.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Uh, without any, are there any other comments? If not, we have a roll call vote to approve the special use permit for the Rush River Commons. A roll call vote, Gene?
With the stated conditions.
With the stated conditions?
Yes.
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 All right, we have, uh, don't go just yet. Uh, we have two other items to do. One is an inclusion of properties of Black Kettle in the Sewer Service District. Is this a resolution?
Uh, it's an ordinance, Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest that the third item, the rezoning, take place first because the property cannot be zoned-
Zoned.
Rural residential and be included in the sewer service district.
All right, so the third, um, ordinance, which is rezoning of the properties of Black Kettle, um, it's currently rural residential and will be broken into two, one being village residential and the other being village mixed juice as per the, um, the ordinance document that's presented in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you, a second from Mary Ann, thank you. Um, any comments? If not, uh, vote to approve this rezoning ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, and finally, um, the inclusion of these properties of the Black Kettle LLC in the Sewer Service District. And we have the document in front of us that, uh, um, points to this. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this?
I so move.
Thank you, Joe. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brad. Um, any discussion? If not, a roll call vote to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, we have done that. Um, I'd also like to add, uh, an acknowledgement of the work of members of this town council. Um, all of you have had skills that have added to this. The planning commission on all the work that they did. Um, John Bennett, you deserve some praise for, for putting, uh, going through this process. John Foot, you deserve praise for putting it with John Bennett. Most of all, to-
He's done that for a long time.
I know, he told me that. And finally, and most importantly, to Chuck Akri for having the vision for putting this together. And in all cases, and in all things, uh, we are always grateful to our town clerk, Barbara Batson, for all her work. And so, Mr. Akri, you have the permission to go forward with your project. Thank you, sir.
And now the work begins.
We're going to have, um, a brief, um, two-minute, um, intermission to allow those who wish to move on to do so. And then we're going to have a brief discussion about the application for the boundary line adjustment, and then also to talk about the electronic meeting.
I think Chuck had something to say.
Mr. Akri. Thank you. All right, we'll have two minutes, uh, to chat and relax, and then we'll get on with the rest of the-
Okay, let's go.
The next, the next two items that we have are, uh, the first is to talk about-
Brad.
Brad. Uh, on August 30th, uh, 2021, we received a letter from, uh, Mr. Foot on behalf of the Black Kettle LLC, the people who are doing the Rush River Commons, um, requesting, uh, the town to consider a boundary line adjustment uh, for the remainder of the property, which is shown, I think, on the, is the whole thing shown on the map?
Hmm, no. It was the town portion on the map.
It was the town portion. So the rest of it, which, uh, goes out at the intersection of Warren and-
Yeah, Steve's got the map.
Two-eleven.
Sorry, Steve, pull that map out again.
While, while he's pulling that out, um, I thought that, um, really, I just want to have a brief discussion. And Mr. Bennett, I want you to go ahead and start off, if you would, with just, thank you, Mr. Akri. That's it, and it's the portion at the top end, which would be the eastern-
Top of that red line.
Eastern.
Top of the red line.
Yeah.
Yep.
Eastern section. Right.
Right.
And if I recall, it's about four acres, just a little under four acres? Okay, okay. And that would also allow you to utilize some of the space that is in the town, but it's on the other side of the creek. Right. All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir. I'd ask Mr. Foot to make any additions or corrections anytime, anytime you'd like. But the outline of the process is simple. It's the details again. A boundary line adjustment is not a hostile proceeding. It's an agreement. Two parties have to come to an agreement that satisfies each of the parties. And that's the trick. Everybody's got to sit down and work through whatever's on their mind and come up with a document that, at the end of the day, embodies the agreement between the board of supervisors and the town council. That's reduced to writing, and it's taken before the circuit court judge, and the judge will review it, and I suspect Judge would, uh, whatever the two jurisdictions agree on, I suspect the judge would approve. Uh, there's some technical things about surveys and different things like that, but I'm not going to go in, go into that. John, I wanted to ask you one thing. Commission on Local Government's no longer involved in this, correct? Yeah. It used to be you'd have to involve a commission on local government, which was a pretty extensive process.
I don't want you to confuse us by telling us what it used to be. All I want to know is what we have.
Yeah, that's, that's why I bring that up.
So that's the process, all right.
That's my understanding, it's no, no longer the case.
I think what we want to do is, um, I would recommend, um, to members of the town council that we have a study group that, um, would look at this, um, boundary line adjustment on behalf of the town, that we have members of the town and also interested members in the, beyond the town, um, who could help us look at this from the town's perspective uh, to begin having the discussions with the county. Uh, and I have asked, um, if the town council, um, is supportive of this study group, um, that we have, uh, I've asked Gary Achill if he would, uh, agree to chair this study group, and he said he would. So, um, I present that as a suggestion to the town council members and would appreciate their thoughts, um, as we go forward.
I happen to, I, I spend some time perusing the town minutes from 1999, which is the last time we did this. Um, unless you're having trouble sleeping. But, um, at that time, I think the discussion with the county started in late 98. We advertised it, the town advertised it in December of 99, and then didn't take action for another two months. And the advertisement at the time is, one, to recognize that there may well be other people who are interested in having a boundary line adjustment and dealing with those all at once rather than a piecemeal process. I would encourage us to consider following the same route and, uh, spend, advertise it for a couple of months to see if anybody would like to pick up for motion.
The advertisements will be legally required. You'll, you'll have a public hearing, a legal public hearing after two advertisements.
And John, in each, the county would have to have a public hearing too?
Yes.
Right, there's a, that's just the beginning of it. Then you've got to have joint hearings and so-
Right. I, I think what John was saying was that we should advertise to see if there are other entities interested in other boundary line adjustments in addition to this request, so that-
And deal with it holistically.
We and the county can deal with them exactly in a holistic way, as opposed to one in the next year, and then one in another year, or whatever. So just doing it all at once and just-
If anybody's interested, the last time we did it before 99 was 1989.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, um, there are a lot of details to be worked out that are site-specific, specific to the property. I, I think it would really burden Mr. Akri in the nature of the project that he proposes to have that juxtaposed with another project or another piece of property that may not be anywhere close to what he is now proposing. I think we could make a, my, my thought would be, we could make a note of all that, but I think it would really be advantageous to, to the entire process in looking towards a successful conclusion if we confine it to this, this one particular piece of property.
Makes sense.
I have a question.
Well, as I've mentioned a number of times, I've worked on the boundary line agreement for, between the county. I represented the county in Culpeper, and the town, that was 10 years. From the time they first discussed it until we worked out an agreement. But if you go online and read it, it's an entirely-
That was a, that was a bit more complicated.
Yeah, just a little bit more complicated.
That was, involved a whole lot of things. But I would say, once an agreement is finalized, move it through the formal process of the court hearing, and they've required public hearings, I don't think you're looking at any more than 60 to 90 days.
So your recommendation is that we put together a study group? And thank you, Gary Achill. Um, I think that's a very good idea, and now we just need to put out the word to get some volunteers, some people from the town that'd be interested to be in the study group?
Yep, and, uh, we have some people that, uh, I have talked to already. I do not want to disclose that study group at this time. The names of people that I've talked to who said they might have an interest, but I'd like to, uh, go ahead and explore that.
And they can just contact Barbara so that she can keep a, a list?
Yep. Um, so we will go ahead, yes, sir, Mr. Akri. Really?
Thank you very much for that. Your point's well taken, thank you, sir. Yes?
Uh, there are actually some of record not nearby us, but I don't know if it's the Commonwealth or accomplished in six months. So what it really comes down to is what is the will of the two political entities involved? And to the extent we can organize a review and, and move it, uh, with due diligence through a process to the town council, and we can encourage, perhaps I have some influence with my own member of the board of supervisors to take similar action at the county level. So long as those two processes are working in tandem, rather than one after the other, we will determine fairly quickly, I think, what the will and what the reason is on both sides. And that shouldn't take much more than six months. It might take another six months until you actually get a quarter that looks at all the process and blessed it. But I think there's reason to be hopeful that, um, if people are serious and forthright, we will know in about two months what would be the benefit to the town, what would be the benefit to the county, and are either of the two parties really anxious? It's kind of like dating. It doesn't take you a year, usually, to find out whether this is something that you want to pursue or not. So I would suspect that we would know in a couple of months whether this is worth pursuing right now or whether it's supposed to come in another one. There will be opinions in this county that say, okay, the town did its thing. I don't know whether it's good or bad, but they did it. Let's see what the outcome is. I hope that won't be the case, because that could be two years before the county's actually serious thinking about this. But we all just need to be grownups about this and be honest with each other and decide, let's start a good process, let's get people's opinions, let's find out what the reasoning is for this, uh, movement. But we have to be cognizant, I hate that word, but we really do have to be aware that there's a, a person who's made a proposal that says, there's a reason for this. This is what you could expect to have happened if this boundary line adjustment occurs. So there's the county, there's the town, but there's also Mr. Akri and his team. So those would be the three principal players.
If I may add that it's not, uh, seeking to slow the process down. In fact, the last time this happened, it was advertised twice in one month, and then within three months, there was a court order changing the boundary line. All I'm saying is we should take into consideration the other local line members. They may still be striving the line, be interested in the line at the same time.
And what I would propose maybe is that we have the study group beginning on this process, but also advertise, uh, to allow other people who'd be interested. Does that sound amiable? Uh, I don't know if we need to have a motion, Mr. Bennett, or whether we, uh, it doesn't seem like-
An official action.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Just to, I guess they need an official action, we'd be, we can do it by consensus. It's just to add it to the agenda for next month.
We'll, we'll add, um, it to the agenda as, um, an opportunity. We'll put it on the agenda for each month, a progress report from the study group, Mr. Bennett? Excuse me, that we would have each month a progress report from the study group?
At least.
Yeah. Do I hear a consensus by voice vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Anything else that we wish to discuss regarding that? Thank you for the good comments.
Thanks.
Do you have a question? Yes, not quite sure what you're just referring to. But the only thing I can say is that if you're serious about wanting to annex or boundary adjustment, that you move as quickly- And, I mean, I keep my finger on the pulse of this county, and you've got a lot of people who are pretty nasty. You know, they don't say, they're pretty nasty. And if you're really interested in doing this, to move as quickly, not wind up with study groups that go on for months, but get together and decide what you want to do.
I refer to Mr. Achill and his analogy to dating. I don't think this is a study group that will be going on for months and months.
But, you know.
So, we can also decide basically, so we can-
Hopefully before the vote.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Bennett.
One suggestion that appears to me, subject to Mr. Achill's comments and Foot's comments, is soliciting the views of council to be forward with Mr. Achill at your convenience, but before the meeting. So really, by the next meeting, we can be getting down to issues.
Mr. Mayor, I have a preferred counsel, Mr. Bennett. What I would hope is that you'll get, I review the statute, but I'm not a partisan attorney, so I should clearly refer to the two gentlemen that serve who are, plus they've got decades of experience. I'm young, they're not, they don't have their best worldly experience. And we graduated two years after one and one year after the other, so. But I would hope that, sir, Bennett would provide sort of the bullet point on step one, six, I think there are five steps. Once that's done, we circulate that to the members of the council. And if you have questions or comments about any of those steps, then we have a focus way of actually getting to it fairly quickly. And then the study group could try and respond to those questions and include all of you in our, in our responses. I think that'd be done in 30 days. So you've been through a long and detailed process on phase one. I can't imagine you're all going to wake up tomorrow and go, wow, that was a dumb thing to do. And since the impetus for the boundary line adjustment is phase two, you have a sort of a focused reason to understand what would come of this and how that process would go. So I think if Mr. Bennett could get us, get me, I'll give point, a term of facilitator, we can then circulate it to the clerk, to the members of the town council. You can take a couple of days, look at it, think what your questions are. Then we can start to really address those specific questions. Some of this process, we have to follow the rules, but some of it's going to go to the rationale, the town's rationale. You can look at your own comprehensive plan. Clearly, you want it, as a part of the county, you want to look at the county concrete. I've done that, this aligns perfectly with those voters, those expectations. Then we have to ask his own administrator, I don't believe there's any contradiction or, or problem there at all. So then we're really down to the legislative will of the council. What is in the best interest of the town? And you've done some of that already, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready. I'm sorry.
No, just a few comments. As we solicit people to join the study group, I would love to see somebody from the Planning Commission on the study group.
Mr. Bennett, that's, I was just going to mention that for the Rush River Commons project, I sent out emails to everybody I could think of. I hate to say it that way, but of course I would include the Planning Commission, ARD, and other interested parties, also interested parties at the county side. Let's get, you know, get things on the table as quickly as we can. So, Mr. Achill, with your permission here, be my hope that we can start out with sort of a broad brush here, see what's standing. And if they, if we do that, then those will be public meetings, and we have to give them three days' notice. Not necessarily, depends on the composition of the committee.
If you have two or more members of either the bodies, then they're, they're formal meetings.
If you have more than two of any, it doesn't have to be two of any particular.
Just a, just a timing issue, just to remind everyone, Gary brought up, the comprehensive plan, we have to, the Planning Commission has to produce a new comprehensive plan or a revision or, or actually, or say, nothing to be changed, but the deadline is September 22.
Yes.
Yeah, to have that, that's when the original, the previous comprehensive plan will run out. So we're even have these processes going on the same time.
I'm curious if, if I have occasion to have been told what the county-
Yes. I believe it has, Mr. Foot?
Yes, it has.
How long has that been on the schedule?
I can remember, I would, if I could remember, I would catch.
The letter of ours was August 30th.
Was that?
That was August 30th.
My letter to the town was probably a month, the month now before that.
Okay, good.
Do we, do we have any idea how the county is going to handle this?
I do not at this point.
Whether they're going to give it to any of their committees or how are they going to go forward?
I do not know at this point.
I, I think after tonight, if you're taking this action, I think it is imperative that someone, the clerk, that someone talk to Mr. Curry and get a statement, probably in writing for him, exactly where the county believes the process is at this moment. I've heard too many different accounts of whether there's been a receipt, whether it's been noticed to the members of the Board of Supervisors.
I can assure you that it has. Gary Curry copied me on the email, transmitting my letter to the board.
So it's the Board of Supervisors.
I believe that he is, I believe he's waiting here from the town.
Correct.
That was a very detailed letter, corrupted some of it's spelled.
And I've had a discussion with, Mr. Woodson and Mr. Curry and I have a monthly meeting, and Mr. Woodson was unable to be there at the last meeting, but we, we did have a discussion.
But we definitely want to make sure that both processes are in alignment. We don't want a perception that one of the others is not working here.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else? All right. Let's bring up the last thing, which is, Mr. Bennett, I wanted to heard you, just about the electronic meeting.
I circulated to council.
Good luck on that one.
We are still in session. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I essentially took out of the Virginia Code the requirements that the code has for, when they say electronic meetings, it's sort of misleading, that's the lead-in under the statute, electronic meetings, but what they discuss in the statute is allowing a member-
Can you talk louder, John?
I took what is in the code, and it's entitled, in the code, electronic meetings. But that is misleading because it really only deals with the participation of typically one individual electronically in an otherwise physical meeting. So that's what this document talks about. It does not deal with electronic meetings of the entire council. The governor's proposing some legislation, some of it's passed. You'll recall last time around that you could only discuss matters related to the emergency, and now the statute has been broadened to include matters that are necessary for the operation of the government. So that's, that's done. But I understand there's still more things in the works for the council as a whole. This is, I don't think there's any changes for the individuals' participation, so this is the existing statute. I just copied it, changed some of the wording, and it gets down to, you have to have a policy. And to me, the code states a whole lot of things right off the bat. And when I got to the very end, what's left for policy, I, I sort of drew a blank there. And that's why I said that needs to be filled in by council. I don't have any suggestions for you. The one thing that absolutely does need to be done, though, is that you have to establish a process to implement this. How, you know, who's contacted and who's the secondary party, third, third party, you know, all of that.
So we're not voting on this tonight?
No, 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 it's just something to-
Okay, good.
So by the next meeting, you know, if, if you would give me your comments before the meeting, and I'll try and put those in some sort of form as a proposed ordinance with, you know, variations to be selected.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, good.
Um, is there any more business to be in front of us tonight?
Want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd love to have a motion to end the meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
And I second. All those in favor, roll call, Gene?
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much for all of your patience and all your work.